Also, regular meeting for the city of Granbury. I'm gonna call it to order 6:00 PM Tuesday, November the 19th, 2024. We are at Granbury City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas, 76048. And we'd like to begin, as we begin all of our meetings, with the invocation from Reverend Wes R. Archer. I did not see him as I walked in. Mr. Archer? There you are. Thank you. If you'd just step up to the counter, we'll all stand and go.
Thank you, Lord, for this opportunity and this place and this meeting tonight. Lord, I ask that you touch each one of these council members, that you give them wisdom and direction tonight. Lord, that you touch the members in this room of this city, that they are heard, that they convey their message. Lord, that we move forward, that we grow this community, that we improve and bless those around us. Lord, we thank you and we praise you for this opportunity. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state of Georgia, one unit, indivisible.
Turn that on. Special night tonight. We will be presenting certificate of election and administer the oath of office to current councilman Bruce Wadley and new council member, place five, Mr. Zeb Ullam, who will join our group. And we will wish Councilman Steve Vale all the best as he goes on his journey. And I want to say before we even get to that, that one of the things that you count on when you are mayor is the mayor pro tem. And I've been very fortunate to have two of the best, Ms. Reiner and Mr. Vale. They have always been there, and I am truly and honestly very appreciative of everything that they've done to make this job, I don't want to say easier, but they certainly let me go to sleep at night. It's been good. Thank you, Steve. I really appreciate it. Okay? So, let's do that.
Judge? Mr. Wadley? Mr. Wadley, would you like to have others join up here?
No.
I could be by your side if you need me to.
Okay. Judge, I think we're ready.
What do they want to do?
Sure. You wanted to say it twice anyway, right? You wanted to say it twice anyway, right?
No, sir. Need you to raise your hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Bruce Wadley.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will faithfully execute?
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office?
The duties of the office.
Of city council, place three?
Of city council, place three.
Of the state of Texas?
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability?
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve?
Preserve.
Protect?
Protect.
And defend the Constitution?
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States?
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state?
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. It's been a pleasure to serve with you, and I look forward to the next, oh, three years, three years, yeah. Three more years. Oh, picture's over there. Speech, cut. Good? Yeah, we're good. Mr. Ullam?
Sir?
Do you have family or friends that you'd like to bring over?
My wife Allison's here.
Oh, Ms. Allison's here.
Can you want to?
No, it's just her.
Where are the boys?
The boys are in school.
At work.
In work.
At work.
Yeah.
We've got one in Tarleton.
All right.
I'm gonna let you go right ahead.
Okay.
Raise your hand and repeat after me, please, sir. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Zeb Ullam.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will faithfully execute?
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office?
The duties of the office.
Of city council, place, city council person, place five?
Of city council person, place five.
Of the state of Texas?
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability?
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve?
Preserve.
Protect?
Protect.
And defend the Constitution?
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States?
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state?
And of this state.
So help me God.
Thank you. Thank you. Lord, if you'd like to.
Thank you for everybody's support. That's about all I can say right now. Wasn't prepared for much more.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Come up here. We're gonna have to party. What do you know? Oh, just received the line. Wait, 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 just. Why don't you come in? Get him in the seat. Oh, you're all people in the seat.
Stick down here. We'll visit, place a tabloid.
Oh, was he gonna stay out? I don't know what you're, I don't know what you're doing. Okay. Hey, congratulations. You don't make that chair look good. We got it, that thing long, doesn't it? To be fair, you're not made to act like that. I may be okay.
So, we're kind of, might kind of roast you, I don't know, but before we do, we would like to take everybody's attention and look towards the monitor for a video that our staff put together. Little unusual, we've got new technology, we're gonna use it.
This is scary. I'm gonna see what's on here. Counselor? I don't know.
We've got people that are working 24/7 around the clock to make sure that all the city services continue to function as we all expect, and they all just do such a Herculean job. And I want to recognize both Carla Walker, our city secretary, who's sitting up here tonight, and also Miki Matlock, she's our deputy city secretary. They keep all of us straight up here and keep us all informed. I don't think we recognize them enough for all the great work that they do. But I want to recognize Aaron in the Parks Department. There's not a time that I go into that park or any of our parks where they're not just spotless. I want to just recognize Chris and his staff and team for just some tremendous work in communicating out our position from the city and working aggressively to try to make sure they understood the implications that have on the city of Granbury. Also, just want to take a second, just thank, you know, all the volunteers that serve on our boards, our commissions, Visit Granbury, and we've got a whole host of people who volunteer in our city that helped make it a great place and really support all the efforts and activities in our city and just say thank you. And just really thank Tammy and her team, they just do amazing job. Acknowledge and recognize Rick and his staff for just outstanding job here in our community. So, Chris, thank you for all your efforts and results.
Hey, thank you so much for taking time out of your Saturday to be here with us this morning. I'm absolutely overwhelmed with the turnout. This has absolutely exceeded my expectations. And again, just thank you, everybody, for coming out today.
All the Parks Department who had, you know, went out after the event to pick up all those trash bags, and there were a bunch of them, and really just all of the volunteers that helped put the thing together to get it all organized. Jeff and Chuck did, you know, a great job with the communication and really getting it all organized. It's just absolutely beautiful, and the team does a great job, obviously, with all the decorations in town, they start fairly early, but it's, they do a fantastic job, and we should thank them for all of their efforts that's turned the city into just a beautiful place, so thank you. Just amazing to me, the amount of work that goes on behind the scenes. There are people out from Public Works working, keeping all the lights on, keeping the water running, keeping our wastewater plant running, and also, we opened the airport up very early, so part of that video, I won't spoil it, was Gary Kozart opening up our airport. So, I'd encourage you to watch that, they're both very, very well done, and I think it's another example of the quality of the work that is put out from the city of Granbury to our citizens to keep them informed of what's going on and let them know the services that the city provides to them, so, great job, thank you. Chris, thank you for all your leadership, thanks for all the volunteers, and it's great to see the community come together. Thank you.
So, I think you might have seen the theme, Mr. Encouragement. He's leaving Texas for wetter pastures, but we do have a little token of appreciation, as some would say, we're gonna clock you. So, don't forget to change the time zone, or when you said it, you know, but we are gonna miss you. But more than anything, we wanted to show that video to express to you our gratitude for your unwavering support, holy cow, and your encouragement and enthusiasm for what you do. Reminds me of a verse in Ecclesiastes, whatever your hand finds to do, do it with all your heart, and you are 100% that person. And we thank you for all the encouragement, all the love that you've given us and support, not only the administrative side of being a council member, but the extra side of being that support, encouraging our team every chance you get. I mean, if you don't believe it, I've got the video for you to watch it again later. But thank you so much, and we want to let some other council members have a word.
Who's next? Anybody want to say anything?
I didn't really know Stephen until we ran together three years ago, and we've become really good friends. He's a great encourager. The other thing I noticed in the video is, and I see this a lot in the front, he likes to talk a lot. So, we really got to see that tonight. But no, it's been just a real pleasure knowing Stephen and working with him on council.
Stephen, we're gonna miss you. We always have good conversations in the back. All of us have different perspectives, and that's what's great about being on city council, is the diversity that's on city council and just the different lenses that we bring also to city council. And I would just say that he's been very impactful, he brought a different type of lens to our city council, a different way of thinking, different way of providing solutions to different problems. So, I want to say thank you, I know that you're gonna do great in Tampa area, so hopefully no more tornadoes or hurricanes, all right?
Absolutely. Yeah, I know. It's all week I've been thinking about this. Now, for those of you that don't know Stephen well, he is a person of integrity. When he ran the first time, and the second time, and the third time, he had a rough go, and he put his whole heart and soul into every race, gave his best effort, and just the fact that he came back to go through that again, even anyone that has ever run for public office knows that it's not just taxing on your time, but it's taxing on your emotions, it's taxing on your family, and everyone that's in your support circle. So, to do that as many times as he did, to stick with it and to keep going until he was successful in his election, just speaks volumes to the type of person that Steve is. Getting to know him has been great. You know, it's one thing to, you know, to sit next to someone and have some conversation and kind of know them on a surface level, but to get to know someone a little deeper, you know, kind of bond you together in a different way, but we're gonna miss you, and I appreciate all your service.
Start the clock up.
So, I don't talk much, but I want to, I want to come out here so you can look at my eyes. I got you, man. Hey, listen, we became really good friends really fast, and when you first made this decision, and you had a few people over to say, here's what's going on, this is what's happening, and when Ava and I left that night, I said, man, what, what an honor to be part of that small group, and how much we appreciated you, not just as a council person, but everything you do in the community, our work in Rotary, just being out there, supporting Ford Training, everything that you're involved in. I can't go to an event or a gala or anywhere in town supporting any charities without seeing Steve there, always with a smile on his face, always supporting everything that he can. The entire community is gonna miss you, man.
Appreciate it.
The whole community. I do have one issue.
There's always a caveat, isn't there?
I now have to teach someone else to read my handwriting when we come out of executive session and make motions.
Appreciate you, brother. For sure.
Well, in case anybody didn't know, Stephen has been encouraging me to run for this position since February, I believe, maybe March, but I've got some huge shoes to fill, some very, very large shoes, and I can only hope that, knowing that he's had my back this whole time, knowing that my family's had my back, and that the community's had my back, that we're gonna be able to go forward, and hopefully I'll have a modicum of comparativeness to you. Yeah. But thank you so much, I appreciate you, Allen.
So, well, Stephen has not only been a great city councilman, but he and Lori have been great friends to Brandon and I, and although I will tell you that it was Stephen and some of the former city council members and current city council members that ambushed me at Rotary and got me to run for city council, so, but as soon as he did that, you know, he kind of became my de facto campaign manager, and he was with me throughout the whole campaign and explained to me exactly what I needed to do every hour of every day. I used to get a text message every morning between, usually between 6:30 and 6:45 in the morning, letting me know, what did I do yesterday, and these are all the things I needed to do today. And he was just a great inspiration to me. When I do grow up, I want to be just like Stephen. But I hate, I'm just like everybody else here, I mean, I hate to see you go. But one thing I will tell you is that, kind of the measure that people have always told me of, a real measure of a person is, if when you leave someplace, if it's better than what it was when you came here, then that's a good measure for you, and Stephen, I will tell you, that certainly says a lot about you.
Before I give you the mic, I'm gonna give it to him, but I just want to say that every door that you knocked, I mean, every door for whichever candidate you were knocking for, it was really for the good of this city, and we can't thank you enough for sticking through it, having the tenacity to run three times and to seat, to be seated once and for all, you know, so thank you for that. And I'll just tell the whole crowd, I was thinking maybe he just didn't want to run for office, so that's why he was gonna move away, so I told him, he didn't have to run for office if he didn't want to move, so.
The rest of the council here has, you know, given you some insight into Steve, but what they didn't say about was the tremendous knowledge that he did bring into the organization. You know, he will talk about his business experience, it's solid. He will talk about the work that he's done out at the airport, and it's solid. I mean, that knowledge that he brings to the council is gonna be missed, as is the rest of your family. Lori, you're gonna be missed as well, so, you, I mean, you have made a big impact on this family, and it's not too, I mean, on this community, and it's not too late, you can change your mind. All right. Congratulations, Steve. Good travels.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it.
This is the three-minute mic?
Yes.
I tell you, I got a 26-foot truck over at the Hilton Garden Inn, actually next door at the conference center, that would say, we're headed out in the morning, so. Hey, I want to say congratulations to Bruce and Zeb, and yeah, really. I don't know about the rest of you, but hell, I can't remember voting for either one of them. I looked up and down the ballot, and I said, where the hell are these guys? So, somebody pointed out, I had to run three times. Three times. Oh, my gosh. Thanks to Pat Stewart for twisting my arm so bad, I think I need rotator cuff surgery. Tony Mobley's in the back, he's the guy that, you know, he and then got me on the corner somewhere downtown and said, we need this guy to run for city council. And of course, I said no about two or three times, and said, maybe playing his own, he looks like that might be a good place to hang out for a while, but anyway, it was a lot of fun. Hey, you know, Chris said, I decided to run in 2021 really to have some stability in our community, in our city council. You know, I ran on the platform of Keep Granbury Moving Forward, and that's really what I tried to help do. Mission accomplished. You know, and somebody pointed out earlier, you know, the cleanup event, Chris and I had a discussion on the way, I don't know, San Antonio, Houston, someplace, and it's just been a passion of mine. I look around the room, there's no trash, that's good. Anyway, Chris was very receptive to the idea and spent a lot of time, these guys did a ton of work, Jeff and Chuck, putting it all together and all the logistics and pieces, and the community has come out, and I think that's been really good. I just, it's nice driving around with a clean town, so hopefully a little bit better. You know, sometimes it's kind of necessary to pause and kind of reset, and I mentioned it, Tammy, don't look my way, you know, to kind of change your latitude and change your attitude, and that's kind of what we're doing, so. Anyway, I don't know if I can read through the rest of this, but Lori, why don't you come up? I know I married way over my head. Just want to say thanks for all your encouragement, support, love, you know, that you've given to Lori and I. And just say, you know, God bless, God bless you all, and God bless Granbury, Texas. Thank you.
Well, counsel, Mr. Kaufman, staff, I think, yeah, somebody said it best, he will be missed, no question about it. So, Mr. City Manager, do you have other encouraging statements, statements you'd have for tonight?
So, we're gonna save a lot of praise for our next meeting. Just FYI, get all your friends here, we're gonna recognize the fire department for the incredible work they do and the recent life that they save. So, we're gonna give them some awards at our meeting, first meeting in December, so I would encourage y'all to put the word out, and we're trying to do something really special for them. They've done an excellent job for us through the decades of service, volunteerism, and so we want to do something special for them. So, other than that, I think, you know, we've got a bunch of superstars, we know that, and what's tough is to make them take a vacation, and so, that's hard, to get some of these people in this room to take their vacation, so we're gonna try to encourage them to do that in December quite a bit. A lot of them have vacation that they haven't used because they're tirelessly serving the community and loving what they do, and we've got some issues to try to get some hours off of their time clock before they lose them, so we've got some really hard workers, and you can see every one of them sitting out there, so. But that concludes our comments for item 4.2 for tonight.
Counsel?
Mayor?
Mr. Wadley?
Yeah, driving around, I've seen city employees all around town getting ready for Christmas, putting up the decorations. It always looks great, and I'm really looking forward to what they do this year. So, thank you to, is that the Parks Department? Parks Department?
Really, it's the electric department putting up the lights where need to be, and the Parks Department doing the ones on the ground. And how about the new butterfly at Granbury Square Plaza? I don't know if you've had a chance to see it yet, it's beautiful, be sure and drive by there tonight. The Parks Department installed it yesterday.
What, what is it?
It's at the corner of Crockett and Pearl, and Aaron has something to say? Oh, building maintenance, okay. Well, we appreciate it, and if y'all haven't seen it, be sure to drive by there, it's graciously provided by the Granbury, Lake Granbury area beautification council, and it is an outstanding ornament for the community, and you know we're a butterfly-friendly city, monarch butterfly city, so it kind of goes with our theme, and we got a really good deal on it on their behalf, so.
Well, I am so appreciative that you have said something about the butterfly, because I had three people ask me this morning, where did we get that big grasshopper? So, I had not seen it yet, so, thank you.
Grasshopper.
Ms. Walker, do we have anyone that's signed up? Okay. We have no one that has signed up for our public comments, so I'm gonna go ahead and skip right down to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine, are previously discussed items, and will be approved with one motion. However, should a member of the city council wish to discuss any item, said item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered under the deliberation agenda. Mr. Ullam, do you have anything you would like to pull off?
I took it.
Okay. Okay. So, nothing is coming off? Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Wadley makes the motion, Mr. Obertir makes the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no opposition, that will pass 6-0. So, we'll move right to the deliberation agenda. 7.1, consider approval of the agreement between the city of Granbury and Enterprise Fleet Management, Inc., Enterprise Fleet Trust to provide fleet management services and authorize city manager to finalize and execute the contract agreements. Mr. Kaufman?
Before I turn this over to Deputy City Manager Michael Ross, I just want to say that, you know, we've talked about this for almost a year, and we have a fleet committee that has been involved in much of it. As you recall, in our budget workshop, we've talked about this project and addressing the needs of our fleet. And let me just tell you, it's really nice to be able to delegate this to Michael Ross, and him take this thing and walk it through the process and vet it out and provide the information that we need for y'all to be able to make an educated decision tonight. So, at this point, I'll turn it over to Michael, thank you for your leadership on this, I know it's been very time-consuming, so thank you.
Thank you, Chris, Mayor, City Council. As you know, for many years, the city of Granbury has faced the challenge of managing an aging fleet, which has resulted in consistently high maintenance and repair costs. Our current fleet of 107 vehicles has an average age of 1,200, excuse me, 12 and a half years, leading to frequent and unexpected maintenance issues, as well as inefficient fuel consumption. As a result, staff has been working diligently to identify a solution that fits within the city's budget while addressing the need for effective vehicle replacement and cost savings. This agenda item represents the outcome of nearly a year's worth of work between our staff and Enterprise Fleet Management. A comprehensive cost analysis has been completed, and every vehicle in our fleet has been carefully evaluated. Based on this analysis, the most suitable replacement vehicles have been selected for each unit aligning with the expected workload and each unit, aligning with the expected workload and responsibilities of the vehicles. Council may recall the presentation from Enterprise on April 29th, following, followed by an additional discussion during the budget presentation on June 26th. Since then, we have further explored alternative solutions, including an in-house leasing and financing option, to determine if we could achieve a similar in-house program at a lower cost. After thorough review, it has been determined that Enterprise Fleet Management offers the best value and solution for the City of Granbury at this time. Staff recommends moving forward with replacing all vehicles older than 10 years in the first year of this program, in addition to the four police vehicles and three airport courtesy vehicles. A more aggressive option, which would have replaced 70 vehicles in the first year, was also analyzed, and a, and a more slightly conservative seven-year plan that would have replaced 65 vehicles. After careful consideration, we believe the 10-year plan, replacing 45 vehicles in year one, strikes the best balance for the city's needs and budget. Importantly, while the estimated savings in fuel and maintenance costs are 37% and 80, excuse me, 48%, respectively, these were not factored into the primary cost analysis presented to you. However, these are certainly expected additional benefits that will result from transitioning to this fleet management solution. The new vehicles will be more fuel-efficient and require less maintenance, which translates into additional long-term savings for the city. With Enterprise, the city will be able to integrate newer, safer, and more reliable vehicles into our fleet. Staff will also benefit from a dedicated account team equipped with cutting-edge technology that will proactively manage our fleet and ensure a high level of service tailored to the city's day-to-day needs. Enterprise has a proven track record, including selling over 600,000 client vehicles in 2022, at an average of 107% above black book value, and currently serves nearly 250 cities across Texas. The city allocated $640,000 in the current fiscal year budget to replace seven vehicles, including four police vehicles and three airport courtesy vehicles. Under the Enterprise leasing program, we estimate that this budget will cover the replacement of 45 vehicles over 10 years old in year one, including these same vehicles. Additionally, we project around $322,755 in revenue from selling the 45 vehicles being replaced, resulting in a net cost to the city of approximately $327,245, all based on conservative estimates. Staff recommends that the city council approve the agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management, Inc., and Enterprise Fleet Trust to provide fleet management services to the city and authorize the city manager to finalize and execute the necessary contract agreements. Thank you for your time, I'm here to answer any questions you have, and Jennifer Bertram is also here from Enterprise, if needed.
Counsel? Mr. Woodley? No. Mr. Oberdear? Mr. Woodley.
Yep. So, Michael, traditionally, you know, we'll buy like a, a police vehicle, and the police drive it till the doors fall off, and then we give it to one of the other departments, inspections or whatever, to use until the doors literally fall off. And oftentimes, when you buy a vehicle, just from personal experience, you know, you buy a new vehicle, it depreciates an awful lot, and then, and then it gets to a point where there's almost no depreciation. So, it's basically like driving it, excluding the maintenance costs, which I'm sure you're going to address. It, you know, you're driving it for not much money. So, all that's taken into account with this cost savings?
Yes, the, the only thing I want to repeat is that we didn't try to actually factor the, the fuel savings and the, and the maintenance savings, we just left that out, knowing that that's going to come as well. All we factored was the cost of the vehicle leased, when we leased them, the upcharge, the upfit to any police cars, and then the equity at the end that we sell them for, and that's where you get the net $327,000, is the estimate for the year, and we have a $640,000 budget for this year.
And does this have anything to do with the police vehicles that we just approved at the last meeting or the meeting before?
They will be rolled into this program as well, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Oberdear?
Yes, so, so, Michael, um, the way we're going to do this now is that the right person will get the right vehicle, right? I mean, we're not going to have, for example, there's some people that are driving around in, in F-350s, and they really only need a, need an F-150. And also, to Bruce's point, we're not going to be taking any of the old vehicles and then passing them down, like say, for example, taking one of the old squad cars and taking that out to the airport and using that for a loaner vehicle out there. An appropriate-sized vehicle will be out at the airport, rather than passing vehicles down that, that we could sell and make more money off of, right?
Yes, sir, that's a primary benefit of this program.
Okay.
I would like to add another comment. We had the option, and Enterprise offers it, to provide the maintenance and, you know, off-site and contract that out, and we consciously made the decision to maintain our current staffing level at the, in our fleet department, and allow them to continue to service these vehicles. But we foresee that, that the type of maintenance they're going to be doing isn't going to be replacing engines and transmissions anymore, that may still happen, but they're going to be able to spend more time on the heavy equipment that we do maintain and require special mechanic services. But mainly, they're going to be changing oil and fixing brakes on these vehicles, and that's about it, unless there's something that's tremendously wrong with it. Also, we maintain control at all times, if we decide that we need to keep these vehicles longer, we can do that. This is not a, a closed-end lease, like you would, like you or I would go down to the car dealer and lease a car, that's what you call a closed-end lease, that where, you know, you can only have so many miles on it before they penalize you or, or whatever at, at the end of the lease, you're, you're dedicated for that entire lease, and then you take it back at the end of three years, whatever you signed up for, and you end up with zero equity. This is an open-ended lease where we can control what we do, we're not worried about the number of miles, or the idle time of the engine, or all the other factors that go into what we do to vehicles, and we can determine, you know, we've only got X amount of miles on this vehicle right now, we can go ahead and lease it for another year instead of replace it, if that's the best thing in the current market situation for resale. So, you know, we get, we get a great staff from Enterprise Fleet to help us with that, and, and they have the foresight to be able to project what we can actually sell it for at market before we actually do it. And so, there, there may be a time when they say, you know, because the market's flooded with used vehicles right now, we need to hold off, and we, we'll listen to them and make a decision. So, um, it's not a closed lease, that's the main thing I'm trying to say, it has plenty of flexibility to allow us to make decisions, to control our own destiny.
Thank you.
Mr. Gorgon?
Just a couple of questions, and most of these are clarifying from conversations we've had in the past. You, you had mentioned that after our last conversation, that you had looked at other options, including doing in-house differently. What were some of the other options that were considered? Were they other companies, were they other, like just going to the bank, or?
That was the primary thing we, we wanted to compare, was to see if we could do something similar from a lease financing perspective, that we could do it ourselves. What we found very quickly is, we still don't have the, the depth and breadth of, of that, of Enterprise, and that ability nationwide, and all of the people they have doing this day in and day out, selling vehicles at the right time, buying vehicles at the right time, rightsizing the fleet, uh, each and every time, will have a, you know, this year, 45 vehicles, if it gets approved, will be preparing those, and there'll be a page of, an ultimate order page for every single vehicle, and all of those will come through all of us, through all the staff from Enterprise, and then ultimately to Chris, and Chris will look over and individually approve each vehicle that goes forward, before it goes forward and gets ordered. And so, we, we also looked at just trying to, to borrow money and, and finance this thing through debt. We just think that this, this is why we're here tonight, we think this ended up being the overall best solution, along with 250 other cities in the state of Texas right now.
Okay. And, um, if, if we approve it tonight, we get to a point where, for whatever reason, it, we just don't feel like it's working for the city, what are the parameters of getting out of the agreement? Is there a potential that we'll lose vehicles or take a loss, or how, how does that play out?
We would just have to fulfill the obligation of any vehicles that we already have.
Okay.
Or have ordered. We would have to process through those vehicles if we decided, for instance, after year one, hypothetically, this, this isn't working for us. We would just say, okay, we've got those, if we had finished the first year, we had all 45, we wouldn't be going to year two, three, four, and five, we would just finish handling the, the vehicles that we already have or have already ordered and are obligated to, and we would process those through, we would, there's no contractual term to this agreement with us and Enterprise, so we can, we can back out anytime, we just have the obligation of finishing what we started with any vehicle that we've already put in place.
Okay. I mean, and the last thing, um, I know that there were some legal issues brought up with the Delaware trust and our governmental immunity waiver and that kind of stuff, has that all been resolved, or, I don't know if that's a Jeremy question, or?
It's still there, uh, and it's there for, for all, all clients that they have. There's pros and cons along with that, yeah, you can't sue a trust, but you also, trusts don't go bankrupt, and, and you're not dealing with a company that's out of business as well, because that, that's why they're the bank, the trust handles the, the financing, the leasing side of the equation. There's also an incorporation, that's the day-to-day with all the people and the assets and everything else, that is vulnerable, but we don't go into these planning to sue, and I, I respect Jeremy and his risk meter, as I, as I call it, and, and I, we, we feel that the risk is an acceptable risk, because we would just stop the relationship and not carry on. And yeah, if we had something in place that we were unhappy with and Enterprise couldn't resolve it, uh, we would have to deal with that at that time, but that's not what we're hearing from other cities and other clients. That's why we're bringing this deal.
And as far as the other cities that you've reached out to, I mean, everyone seems...
All the managers we've talked to...
Enjoyed it, or?
Yes, sir, the managers we've talked to are very high on it.
Okay.
That's where we heard this the first time, was one of the local managers in the region brought it, uh, brought Jennifer and Enterprise to do a presentation to our study group, our city manager study group that we've been a member of, and that's where we were introduced to Enterprise, and it's very intriguing, a year ago.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I might just add again, that being an open-ended lease, that allows you to do anything at any time that you deem necessary. So, like, if, if, if we were upset with them and didn't want to work with them anymore, which is totally against their company policy, they want happy customers, but say we find, find an impasse we can't live with, we can make the decision to order new vehicles, to replace these, and send those back, and sell them, and, you know, whether there's equity or not, you can, you can make that decision. So, we'd never want to do something that would cause us to lose money, but you do have that ability to do that, if that's what you want. If you're that mad, you want away from them, you can, you can divest yourself of all those vehicles that you bought, and go out procure some more somewhere else in some other manner, but that probably wouldn't be the smartest thing to do. So, uh, but again, the, the trust, back to that trust and the, and the incorporated arrangement, the, the fleet trust is the, is the arm that finances all this, so it's a bank, so to speak, and you don't want your bank vulnerable to being sued, you want your assets secure. So, there's a plus and minus to that. Again, I think it's a, a wise business strategy, if I was going in business, that's the way I'd want to set it up. And then, the, the Fleet Enterprise Management, Inc., is in the agreement to be in our venue if, if there is a problem, we have to go to court, it's in Hood County, Texas, and Jeremy's worked through all that and got us represented well there. So, I'm, I'm like Michael, um, there's going to be some additional work internally for us that we've never done before, because we've never taken on this many new vehicles or procured this many vehicles all at once, and, um, it's going to cause some growing pains internally, but we're going to try to provide the additional help where we need, cross-departmental-wise, to help those folks that are bringing these in and processing them, and make sure there's a, a smooth transition, so.
Other comments? Nope. No other comments? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Do I hear a, excuse me, do I hear a motion to approve the agreement between City of Granbury and Enterprise Fleet Management, Inc., and Enterprise Fleet Trust to provide fleet management services and authorize the city manager to finalize and execute the contract agreements?
So moved.
Mr. Oberdear makes a motion, do you hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Woodley makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That will pass 6-0. Thank you, uh, Mr. Ross, for all your hard work, and I know you didn't do it by yourself. Thank you, Jeremy, and counsel for those, uh, questions.
Thanks for coming, Jennifer, appreciate you being here in case we needed you.
Yeah. Thanks for the, uh, extra columns on the worksheet, too. I've answered a lot of questions, thank you. Okay, we'll move to 7.2, consider adopting resolution number 2415, accepting a petition seeking the dissolution of the existing Lakeview Landing Public Improvement District and a call for a public hearing for the city council's December the 17th, 2024 meeting. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor, counsel, it seems kind of counterproductive to bring something back to you that we created about a year ago, but there's been some interpretation of the law that's changed, and I've asked our, our bond counsel to review that with y'all tonight. Uh, this is Jordan Sawyer with Norton Fulbright Rose Law Firm, and I'll just turn it over to you, Jordan.
Yeah, thank you so much, Chris. Uh, yeah, Mayor and counsel, thank y'all for having us, and that's like you said, Chris, I, we never want to go backwards here, this is going to present on both 7-2 and 7-3, and kind of just give a little bit of the history of what has happened, where the changes have been, and, and what we're going to do going forward. Uh, so, if y'all remember back in September of 2023, the Lakeview Landing Pid was created. At that time, excuse me, we authorized the improvements that we would normally expect within a Pid, the roadway improvements, some park improvements, some drainage facility improvements, and then a catch-all that exists within the Pid Act, uh, that is basically any other related improvements that are tied to that. Uh, and for a long time, that, that, uh, that catch-all provision has really stood as a catch-all provision, um, and in the interim, we had a deal, um, in another city up north of here, where the Attorney General's office interpreted that catch-all much more narrowly than I think anybody has ever interpreted it, and basically said that if you did not specifically say water and sewer improvements, you could not finance water and sewer improvements, which is a critical part of this, uh, transaction. Um, and so, in the interest of making sure we don't get on the AG's bad side, to make sure that we can get this through, what we don't ever want to do is take a deal to the Attorney General, who approves all of the bonds, and have the AG say, this is a problem that we would not be able to fix. Uh, so, out of a little bit of abundance of caution, that's the, the step we're taking here, is to dissolve the old Pid, and then the item 7.3 will be to create a new, to start the process to create a new Pid, uh, which will have all of those things expanded. So, really, nothing's changed in the project, nothing's changed in the legislature, um, the AG has kind of released a little bit of a new interpretation, um, that's come through word of mouth, that, that we just wanted to make sure we're protected. So, happy to answer any questions, I know, representative from the developers here, if there's anything else, uh, but just wanted to give that, that background.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Um, so, Chris, or maybe you can, I'm sorry, your name?
Uh, Jordan Sawyer.
Jordan, why, why can't we just revise the current Pid? Why, why can't we just do that? Why do we have to start the process over?
Yeah, so, so the process, so the Pid Act does not provide a revision process, um, and it's really not a process that the AG recognizes or, or contemplates. There is a mechanism by which we could go to the Attorney General Office to get their approval, to see if they would, in this one case, allow us to do something that's outside the Pid Act. Unfortunately, the Attorney General Office usually takes about a month to sit sweets to get anything back to us, and so, to try to keep this process moving, the restarting and starting process will get that done faster than we would get an answer from the AG if they would allow that one-off, um, that one-off kind of response. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mayor?
Mr. Gorgon?
Just to clarify, this isn't going to affect the development or, or anything that we've already discussed, or the park, or anything like that?
Yeah, no, no, there's, and, Sarah, you can confirm, yeah, there's no, no changes to the development, to the plan, to what's happening, uh, it's really just a, I hate to say it, it's really just a lawyer issue of...
Formality.
We don't want the AG to, to have something where they say, we don't want this deal to go through.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Mr. Woodley?
And since the construction hasn't started yet, nothing's really happened with this pit anyway.
Yep, that's correct.
I mean, the one, the one that's in place right now, hasn't been exercised in any form at this point? at this point.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah. And that's, that's part of the dissolution, is basically nothing has happened. The, the process for which we're going to use has been frustrated, and that's why we're doing that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
No other questions? None? So I, do I hear a motion to approve resolution number twenty-four fifteen, accepting a petition seeking the dissolution of the existing Lakeview Landing Public Improvement District and calling for a public hearing for the city council's December seventeen, twenty-two-four meeting?
So moved.
Mr. Gorgon makes a motion?
Second.
Mr. Overdier, seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. That will pass six and oh.
Jordan, will you coordinate with me by email tomorrow when this notice for the public hearing needs to be published and everything, so we can make sure that's done properly?
Yes, sir. Yeah, and I've, I've talked to Carla, I've talked with Ed. It's going to be, it's going to be in the November thirtieth edition, which is that seventeen-day mark.
Okay.
So we have it all, we're all coordinated there.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Sawyer. Appreciate it. Good.
I'm happy to wait on this one as well.
Okay, why don't you? Seven point three. Consider adopting resolution number twenty-four dash sixteen, accepting a petition seeking the creation of the Lakeview Landing Public Improvement District within the corporate boundaries of the city and calling for a public hearing for the city council's December seventeen, twenty-two-four meeting.
Perfect. And so-
Mr. Kaufman?
I'll turn it over to Jordan again.
Thank you so much. Absolutely. So, so just, it's, as we just talked about, this is kind of the first step, and then the new process, nothing's changing with the development. All, the only reason I wanted to speak on this one was just to give a, a look of what the net steps are. So tonight, we do the first step in the PID, is we accept the petition, call the public hearing. The second step at that December meeting would be to create the PID. Then in January, there'll be a, we'll come back before council to have what's called a preliminary service and assessment plan that lays out the expected cost and the expected assessments for the bonds. Then at the February meeting, we'll have the actual levy of assessments in the bond sale with the early closing March, uh, closing in early March, sorry.
Is it, is it appropriate and inappropriate to ask? If it's inappropriate, you didn't hear me. What, do you have any idea what the, or the total of this bond will be?
I don't know the total of the bond. I believe that the maximum amount that's authorized in the petition and for the, the actual PID would be twenty-five million dollars is the actual maximum, but that's always what's said as, as a maximum.
The current number is fifteen point seven million.
Perfect.
With the max, okay.
I just happen to know that.
There you go.
Okay. Other questions? And that fifteen point seven will come out of Mr. Ullam's pay?
I think it's going to come out of our attorney up here.
Wait, wait, which one?
Both of them. I, I will, I would like to reiterate the fact that though this is a tax-exempt bond issue, it does not tie or bind the city to pay this back. It's up to the development to pay it back. So we are a fiduciary agent on this process to allow them to get tax-exempt bonds sold. So that's very beneficial to investors.
Yep.
And so that's, that's a tool that legislators put in our hands to help facilitate economic development. And I'm excited that this is coming close to fruition after many years of work. And I know, Sarah, the attorney for the developer is same thought process, so.
Okay. Other questions? Okay. Hearing none, I'm, is there a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-four sixteen, accepting a petition seeking the creation of the Lakeview Landing Public Improvement District within the corporate boundaries of the city and calling for a public hearing for the city council's December seventeen, twenty-two-four meeting?
So moved.
Mr. Gorgon makes a motion?
Second.
Mr. Rodriguez makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. That passes six and oh. Thank you, Mr. Sawyer. Thank you, Sarah, for coming. Okay, we'll move to seven point four. And Mr. Kaufman, I believe this is your chance to introduce Mr. Chester Nolan, who's going to provide us a report on the status of current capital improvements under construction, streets, water, wastewater. I hope everybody here drove down Morgan Street today to get here. It is nice.
I just wanted to take this opportunity to have our Director of Public Works, Chester Nolan, to give us an update on the capital improvement projects that the city is undertaking right now, and give us the progress. I thought it'd be good for y'all to hear from me instead of, or from him instead of me, as he's out there every day looking at the situations and, and monitoring it and simply reporting to me. So he's earned the right to talk about this. I'll let you take it over, Chester.
Good evening, Chris, and Mayor and members of the council. Thank you, the opportunity. I'll just start through the projects that, I'll just start through the projects that we have recently finished and are still ongoing. The Knox groundwater storage tank is complete but for some minor cleanup by the subcontractor. It is online and being used daily. The old tank, the, the top on the old tank has to have some rehabilitation. That's going to be about a two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar project be scheduled in the next year or so. Also, Knox Two, which is the one west of, of the current facility, it also has some issues with the, uh, top on it, and will have to be refurbished also, but those are in a future budget, so we'll hopefully get those online. And, and they're still online, but we need to get the tops. They have rusted considerably because of the amount of chlorine that was being injected, and the gas was causing some rust up there on the top. The structure itself is still sound. Moving on, the South Wastewater Treatment Plant, the raw water pump was, or water treatment plant, I'm sorry, the raw water pump has been installed. We now have two raw water pumps operational. We ran for about a month with just one pump because the, uh, repair time on the, on the pumps is considerable, and we have to, y'all probably saw part of the operation. We have to hire a barge and two cranes and a diver to be able to get to those raw water pumps and to, for the check valves that are operational there. That's a hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-dollar ticket each time we do that. So we were trying to extend the timeframe and save a little money on it, and, and eventually, I think Chris and I both were tired of rolling the dice on that with just one pump working. So we had the other pump and everything installed just recently. So we're operating on two pumps, and everything's good at the water treatment plant. We have a new pump that the council approved, I believe, the last meeting, or maybe one before, at a cost of about a hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars. That has a six-to-seven-month delivery time. It's not necessarily a sole-source item, but there are very few construction companies or manufacturing companies in the US that manufacture that particular pump that we need. So it's under, underway and, and being ordered. The South Wastewater Treatment Plant is completed. We have various treatment units that are off and on from time to time due to warranty work. We have one situation going on that I'm sure all of y'all have heard from time to time about the odor coming from the plant. We have identified the source of that odor, and we had a contractor that Chris brought to us that has a, a chemical material that we can put into the plant that should eliminate all of the odors coming from the plant, even though they're small right now. We hope to get to a point where we have no odors coming from that plant, or at least they're so minimal you can't smell it. On the yeast plant, the, most of the treatment units are, have been built in terms of the concrete part of it. The last count that I had, we had over, well, not over, but almost five thousand cubic yards of concrete that had been poured out there. A lot of concrete, a lot of, a lot of treatment units. They are in the process right now of, of putting lids on all of the buildings. Sometime after January the first, all of the treatment units, the mechanical and electrical parts of it, will start being installed. At the present time, I think we're between four and six weeks ahead of schedule. The contractor is very insistent that they're going to try to keep that schedule and be in here and out of here and have a finished product for us. So that will help greatly. That will also allow us to move forward with development in the, in the city as far as new construction. We've had a moratorium, and y'all have had to pass it again back in October, and hopefully we'll be able to, to release that within the next year and get it all operational. Kalinko Drive should be complete sometime after January the first. We're probably about sixty-five percent complete right now. As you have driven down there, I'm sure we switched from an asphalt to concrete, and we've had a couple of little interruptions with the rain that has caused us to have to wait for the material, the base to dry out before we could start laying concrete. But they are moving forward with that, and, and we hope to be complete in the month of January. We currently have a contractor in town working on the sewer manholes and pipe bursting. I'm sure you've all seen it on East Pearl and Brazza Street. We have a crew, and they are, they are hard at it. We have one of the owners of the company in today, and he is here to inspect what's going on. We had a little hiccup that the cable that we were using to pull pipe through the old pipes broke, and it broke under Pearl Street. We had to get a permit from Tech Dot. We had to, had to get a, uh, transportation plan for, from Tech Dot. So we're moving forward at that. We have engineers that are designing the water lines to replace the galvanized mains on Elizabeth and Penbrook. I think you previously had approved the engineering. Thanks, sir. That should take care. Once we get the engineering work, I believe city manager is prepared to move forward with construction on those two areas of installing new water and sewer lines, or new water lines. Then that will take care of the red water that, that we currently see in that area that the, the residents there are having to deal with. Moving on, the main lift station, while it is not quite operational, I got a, just before council started, I got a, a text from Chris Hay, who is our engineer on that. His comment is, I just spoke with Bradley, who is the contractor, and Fred, who is the inspector, about the main lift station. They were able to check the rotation on the pumps today, and the pump manufacturer checked the pumps and control panels. It sounds like the system control and data acquisition doesn't have the programming quite ready to do a startup. We're pushing to get it ready. I don't think we're far off from being able to start up, but I'll keep you posted as they progress. So that is moving forward, and we hope to have it done before the first of the year. Certainly, I would like to have it within a week or two after Thanksgiving. Engineer is working with Tech Dot on the widening, three-seventy-seven widening and rehabilitation, and that's moving forward. We will be back with some thoughts on the engineers, how to proceed with our part of the engineering for that, for that project. So we'll be there. And with that, if you have any questions about any other projects or these projects, I'll be happy to answer.
Mayor? Chester, that, so that third pump that we have on order, that, that's going to be basically going to be a spare pump that we'll have that, in case we need it, and we're not going to really, we only need two pumps, right?
That will be the fourth pump.
Okay.
We'll have three that'll be online, and we'll have a fourth pump on the bank that if one of those three goes out, we'll be able to switch them out pretty quickly.
Okay, okay, perfect. And then on the, on the yeast plant, then what, what's the estimated completion date now?
The actual construction time was twenty-seven months from this last November, from a year ago. So they're anticipating being complete by late September, October of twenty-five.
I, I think that's January, February twenty-twenty-six, if you add it up.
Well, okay. They were-
The twenty-four months.
Twenty-four months.
Yeah.
We're, we're a little anxious about it. It's moving forward well, and, and they have pre-established all of the materials for the plant. They're not waiting on materials to be installed. They've got it all sitting on the bank, ready to go. So their, Graycon is doing a wonderful job out there. We've had one complaint-
Along with that project, there's also a scope of work to increase some water lines around that area, and we'll be bringing that to you as soon as they finish getting that designed and award a bid for that construction as well. The water treatment plant needs water line there, and also we need to extend it along Old Granbury Road. So there's, there's some requirements in the purchase that require us to do that as well, purchase of the land. So that's coming our way.
Yep. Okay, just one last thing. Just, I know, I know we kind of always budget a million dollars a year for, you know, repairing roads and that, and, and I know that's never going to get us ahead of the game. Are, are we at some point going to be looking at, looking at all the roads that we have and saying, okay, these are all the roads that need repairing, and then just kind of rank them A, B, C, and D as far as, you know, with the worst, first, try to get the worst ones first, but, and then figure out how much we need to maybe do a bond for, or something like that?
Councilman, let me pitch that to the city manager. I know he's been working on a, on a project for that exact thing. Maybe you're ready, Chris?
Thank you, Chester. I do have consultant public management working on a study of all our streets again. It's the same folks that did it about eight years ago, and as we talked about in the budget workshop, we're not getting caught up at a million dollars a year, so we're going to have to do something different. And what we're seeing is a lot of these streets that were, were done in twenty-twelve, thirteen, and fourteen are going to need complete reconstruction. So instead of what they did was grind off the surface and put a new overlay on it, that's not working. And in fact, we've had to replace a couple even quicker than ten years. So I know that in two thousand and fifteen I came, and we've already replaced two of those streets that were redone in two thousand and fifteen. So I think a good example of, of base failure is over in front of the Napa Car Dealers, or Car Auto Repair Store, and that, that was done in two thousand and fifteen with bond funds that had been borrowed, I think, two thousand and twelve or two thousand and eleven, and it was wrapping up the end of those bond funds. And it was not engineered, which shocked me, and it was not addressing the sub-base. And so we're going to pay for those bad decisions made, you know, over a decade ago. But you don't, you don't know what you don't know. And so we know better than that, and we're going to take care of business. But that's why we're encouraged by what we've seen, what we've been able to put together and, and construct is holding up. And, but again, it's going to take money, and it probably need to put together a bond package, as we've talked about, and, and do a big, big group of streets, and, and have to figure out what we need to do moving forward and strategically plan that. That's a good question. Thank you.
Chester, the airport, any of the projects that we have going there?
Mayor, I, I'm sorry to say, I'm not really associated with the airport construction that's going on. That's been pretty much over into, into Pat's domain and to Cody's, the new airport manager. They're basically handling all of that. I think that we're waiting on a right-turn lane on three-seventy-seven to go into Archer Court. There's some water and sewer lines that are, if not complete, they're nearing construction over to the, to the FBO and, and the new terminal building. So beyond that, I, Mayor, I'm sorry, I can't answer.
That's fine.
Let me get Mr. Ross to address that. He's the project manager on, on all the things going on at the airport at this point.
The thing, we have a meeting every two weeks. We can, we give other people besides Chester this opportunity. besides Chester this opportunity. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Lots of, lots of things going on at the airport. Yes, sir. The Archer Court project, we finally have the change order approved because we finally got the price from the contractor that built Archer Court to construct the right and left turn lanes on three seventy-seven into Archer Court. We've also included, uh, getting the, the signage that's needed, uh, with, for that road to show everyone where the airport is ahead, as, as well as the other road signs that are needed, uh, for the airport to find it, uh, if you will. We are, we have finalized on the perimeter road, the EDA grant that you all have approved. We have signed documents with the engineering firm, Westwood, and with the grant, with Grant Works for Grant Administration. Uh, we'll be, we've already got the grant administrator working with us on the EDA grant side. We'll be having that kickoff meeting with Westwood Engineering probably in the next week or two, uh, on getting, getting under design on the phase one and phase two of the perimeter road. We were able to get the, the price down, uh, thirty, forty thousand, something like that. And that negotiations that we had with the engineering firm trimmed a little bit of that, those costs off as we hoped we could, uh, and brought that price down. The, um, we're about, and Kira's been working, we, with, uh, Brooks Baker Surveying, we'll be doing a, a complete survey, plat survey of the airport to get that platted, uh, and to try to tie down any of the land leases and things like that that we know of at the time. Otherwise it'll just be large tracts of land on the, on the plat until they do, uh, develop and however they develop in the future. Let me see. Um, still waiting for the, uh, flight school to sign a lease, hopefully for the FB, for the old FBO. That hasn't happened yet, uh, but we hope that it will soon. I think negotiations are still going on there a little bit between Shay, maybe Chris. I haven't, uh, been connected to that directly. And then we have, um, from a development perspective, I know they had a big meeting this week with the, um, Black Tie Aviation and the Large Hangar Construction Project, uh, that Chris been working on with Shay and, and now the development team is working on those with, with the, the owner or the, the, the leasing, leasing from us. And I'm probably forgetting off the top of my head, is there another one, Chris, that I'm?
That's enough.
Yeah, that's.
Thank you.
Get you busy this week.
Little bit going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Plenty. Thank you.
Counsel, other questions?
Yeah, I was going to say while Chester was still up, um, I drove down Kalinko Monday right after the rain. You don't have to get back up. But I drove down Kalinko right after the rain because I figured I wouldn't be interfering with anybody's construction. And it's about, well, half done and half rebar. I did not realize it was going to be concrete. It's that, that, that street is looking awesome. They're doing, they're, I mean, they're doing a great job.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Nolan. Thank you, Mr. Goffman. We appreciate it. I mean, that was a discussion, so we have no action to take. So now we're going to move to number seven point five. We're going to consider approving the selection of a contractor to complete the roof replacement project on the buildings of the Granberry Square Plaza as recommended by the Granberry Historic Properties Corporation in an amount not to exceed two ninety-five.
Thank you, Mayor. You will recall that, uh, this was identified when we purchased the property as a project that needed to be done. Um, thank you, Aaron and your team for working hard and, and Christie to put together the bid packet for this. And, uh, today we finalized the, uh, the meetings and, uh, Granberry Historic Properties has a recommendation to you. I want to turn it over to Michael Ross. He, uh, was in on the, uh, interview team to interview the roofers and their contracts and their scope of work to understand it so we can make the best selection for the city. So take it away, Mr. Ross.
Thank you, Chris. Mayor, city council. Uh, staff opened proposals for the roof replacement project at the Granberry Square Plaza on October 24th, 2024. The city received eight proposals at that time from contractors and the five-member staff team evaluated and scored the submittals and narrowed that field down to the top three to, to interview and make a final determination of who to recommend for the project. Staff has completed those interviews and made a recommendation to select Streamline Advantage as the contractor for the his Granberry, we made that recommendation to the Granberry Historic Properties at their meeting this afternoon in the amount of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty cents. Staff and the Granberry Historic Properties also makes that same recommendation to the city council this evening. Staff and the GHP also recommend approving a 10% contingency to cover any unforeseen roofing-related issues that might arise as the project progresses on these historic buildings. The total expenditure amount being requested this evening is two hundred and fifty-two thousand and ninety dollars. City council may recall approving a budget of six hundred thousand to cover the roof replacements, parking lot overlay, and other miscellaneous items as needed in the buildings. Staff recommends city council approve the selection of Streamline Advantage as the contractor to complete the roof replacement project on the buildings in the Granberry Square Plaza and approve the 10% contingency, making the total not to exceed two hundred and fifty-two thousand, ninety dollars, as recommended by the Granberry Historic Properties Corporation and staff. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
I do have one. Michael, is it Streamline Roofing or Streamline Advantage? Because the third vendor was CS Advantage. I'm wondering if maybe that's a typo.
It is Streamline. I'm sorry.
Let's go with Streamline. That way we don't.
I got them cross. Sorry. It is Streamline.
Correct. What's, is that the total name? Just Streamline?
Streamline Roofing.
Okay.
Anyway, that's who we've selected.
Correct.
That's who we recommend.
They are the low bid.
And they're qualified.
Right.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Michael, was that the, the difference between the, the Triger roofing and Streamline roofing was the cost?
That was the, the primary difference. They both were good contractors. Triger actually had probably a little more experience, but the price was the guiding factor because they both, when we interviewed them, they were both high quality and just had good, a good reference and, and good attitude about the whole project. But they came in lower than we were originally estimating. So we were very pleased. We were thinking around three hundred thousand for the project. So two twenty-nine plus the 10%, which we're, we're pretty pleased.
Usually y'all provide the evaluation matrix to us, um, but it just doesn't seem like the, y'all just provide the total score for this one.
That there wasn't the matrix in there? The comparison of the contractors?
Just the score.
Huh, okay. Yeah. We're, we're using a new system that we're still getting used to. Open Gov is, is now handling our procurement side of things. And so we don't get that data like we did in the same way. So that's something we need to work on.
Other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Oberdehr.
Um, so now that the roof, part, part of that roof is tile, correct? So are we, are we replacing the tile roof as well or just?
There is a very small amount of tile repair work that needs to be done. The bids were one thousand to two thousand in general. One missed it completely and put forty thousand as their ceramic tile number, but they were, they were already high. So we didn't have to mess with that. But yes, sir, there are, there is some repair to the tile roof in that, that there's, I don't know if they were the one thousand or the two thousand off the top of my head, but it was, that's a small amount of the total.
Okay. So once, once this is all done though, the whole roof will be, will be complete?
Correct.
I mean, there won't be any, any problem with any of it?
That's correct.
Mayor.
Yes, Mr.?
Are we, I'm assuming, well, I don't, I don't know for sure. Are, are we going to be expecting just for the public's sake, any potential road closures, crane usage, anything like that that may impact?
We talked about that with the contractors in the interview and we don't anticipate , uh, impacts negatively on the, on the tenants. They're happy to, the workers all park across the street or down the street, wherever they need to, to not impact. They will need the usual trailers and, and stuff like that for materials that will help them find the best spot for that. Uh, the other good thing about the, the low bid is they were also the fastest. Uh, they, they put five days down, which, uh, some don't believe is possible. And so even if it takes 10 days, we're thrilled at the end of, at the end of this because they've, they're going to mobilize and have crews working on all three simultaneously if that's what we want. So we'll have that kickoff meeting.
It, it might be, and this just crossed our mind. I, I know, and I haven't been in the backside of that for a while, but if you're looking at the building on your left, there was a, a fenced in area behind the parking lot. Is that?
That may be.
Maybe a secure location that they could house all of their?
Yes, sir. That may become a storage, uh, location. That's exactly what we talked about with them is getting materials stored there for them.
Staging area.
Staging, right.
And they're willing to work with us to where they're not, um, interfering with our weekend festivals and events like that. So.
They're willing to wait to start if we want them to.
Wait for the temperature. If it gets cold, we don't want to put a roof on in the cold weather. And fortunately we've got the leaks repaired, so we're not in a terrible bind. But part of that contingency is because the roof leaked for so long, we don't know exactly what they could uncover once they pull that flat roof up and see what, we may need to replace some, uh, insulation or boards or something. Yeah.
Other?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ross. I hear no other comments, questions. So here a motion to approve the selection of a contractor to complete the roof replacement project on the buildings in the Granberry Square Plaza as recommended by the Granberry Historic Properties Corporation in an amount not to exceed two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
What, what's the number, Michael?
Two fifty-two ninety.
No, no, without the contingency?
Without the contingencies, two twenty-nine, one seventy-three point forty. That would be the bid. And then we're asking for a 10% contingency to take that number to two fifty-two and ninety. So two hundred and fifty-two thousand, ninety dollars would be the grand total.
We want to make sure we get that right. Yeah.
Right.
So I think a motion would sound like, um, someone would move to select Streamline Roofing in the amount of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty cents with a 10% contingency for a total amount of two fifty-two oh ninety for the Granberry Square Roof Replacement Project.
So moved. Second. Motion has been moved. Second.
Got you.
Okay. We got that? Okay. All right. Motion's made. Motion's been seconded. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. That will pass six and oh. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay.
Do you second?
We, uh, now declare that the Granberry City Council is convened into open session. Then all members are present. The city council will go into closed session pursuant to provisions of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections. We have five five one oh seven one, consultation with attorney pending or contemplated litigation. Five five one oh seven two, deliberation regarding real property. Five five one oh seven four, personnel matters, city secretary and municipal judge annual review. Five five one oh eight six, certain public power utilities competitive matters. And five five one oh eight seven, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. So we are now in executive session. Okay, we are at nine twenty and we will be reconvening into open session. All council members are present. No action was taken in the executive session. Do we have any other business here today?
Mayor.
Mr. Gorga.
Make a motion to move to ratify and authorize the city manager to execute market participant agency agreement, um, interlocal agreement concerning goods and services for designated transmission operator matters and the transmission operator agreement and all other ERCOT documents required for the designated transmission operations.
Okay. Second. Motion's been made. It's seconded by Mr. Oberdehr. Any discussion? No. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays. That motion will pass six and oh. Other motions? Business? No other business? Okay. Did you have business? Okay. There being no other business, I announce this, uh, session as adjourned.